Paul. Okay, so it's it's an attempt to gain kind of the priorities, issues, economic challenges that may be unique to Monroe from the business owners themselves. That's the goal. And then to use that information to inform our decisions as we make, you know, policy decisions, budgeting decisions that do affect the business community. So that's our goal. Does that answer your question?
Yes. Have you been taking a look at the questions that are asked in this survey each year to maybe determine maybe why the results or the responses are not as robust as you would like?
Oh, absolutely. We actually, I follow up after the survey and talk to people who took it, as well as anecdotally, as I've come across businesses who didn't take it all. Oh, didn't you not? Why didn't you? Didn't hear about it? Didn't get the email? Too long? The questions generally focus on three areas. One is just basic information. You know, what's your business? Who's your contact? You know, general information. The second thing we like to find out is economic conditions. How are you doing? Are you laying off people? Are you hiring people? Do you expect to expand? Are you looking for a larger space? Are you looking to downsize? And then the third phase will generally ask kind of questions about priorities. What would you like to see the city do to support businesses? How can the city increase the economic viability of our community? So there are basically three sections to it.
Okay. I'm just asking these questions because we are being asked to consider an additional $25,000 to $35,000 for another survey. And so I'm just trying to get some background on what's already been done and why this might be something that we really need to do. And maybe what might be different about hiring a firm to do it versus having you and the department do it.
Well, my response to that would be that it depends on how useful the information would be to the council. And we really do this to inform policy decisions. So as the lead policymaking body, how could you use this information? And then if we can get a larger statistical analysis of the business community, that information is more accurate and more broad-based and more likely to hit the target. So that question would be answered by how how much can the council use this information? And how can they see it being used and what value they see in it?
So we have a survey from last year, correct?
Yes, we do.
With information? Okay. Thank you.
I would I would add more specifically, some of the examples of information that we've received back from the business community is 522 is a challenge for businesses in Monroe because they can't get or receive or deliver products. And so we've been able to use that information then to support our finished 522 campaign because we have actual, you know, verbatim statements from business owners about how 522 is affecting their their bottom line. I would also add that prior to 2019, we could see the increase in level of concern from business owners around homeless individuals in Monroe. And so that really then allowed us to step up our focus on trying to figure out how to progress this issue, which resulted then in the Homeless Policy Advisory Committee, the Community Human Services Advisory Board, and now kind of our bigger press to provide kind of more direct coordination between the city and our human service provider and the community. And we wouldn't have had that direct feedback if it hadn't have been for these surveys, providing those verbatims for challenges for business owners.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck, go ahead.
I'm not sure I had heard an answer to Councilman Kenny's question. And forgive me if I'm going to paraphrase what I think I thought you were asking. What does $25,000 to $35,000 buy in a survey by a company that we're not getting through the surveys we've done in the past four years?
And James, maybe I can start by addressing that. And if I missed anything, you can you can add in. So what's currently occurring is is that we have about, James, is it about 1,200 businesses in Monroe?
Yeah.
And we're getting about 75. I think our most recent survey, we received, what, 75 responses total? And those are individuals that are self-selecting. So we're not hearing sufficiently enough, for example, from our manufacturing community about what their challenges are. You know, are they having trouble finding qualified workforce? Because if they are, that's something then, as a community, we could help them address. So I don't think we're getting, you know, kind of the the different types of businesses. We're getting a lot of restaurant and a lot of service sector, but not much of anything else.
So the so the survey company that we would pay, we reach out to the other 1,125 businesses and they'll ask the same questions and look for more answers?
Yes, and I think they can do what we're not able to do, which is to call individuals on the phone and talk to them on the phone and do a phone survey. Because right now, what we're asking people to do is to go on the Lotte Monkey Survey. And so they're not finding the links. They're not participating. They're dropping out and they're hard way through. So it's kind of all of those things that you would normally see in a survey that people just aren't participating. When you're talking about vision, people get super excited and participate. When you're talking about a business survey, business owners are busy and they just, you know, struggle, I think, to find the time to do it. And so hiring a firm, we hope, is something that might help us overcome that hurdle.
Any other questions, Councilmember Starbuck? Well, the next question would be if you had any counsel's or if you're comfortable. Councilmember Gammel? Or if you become Gammelford?
Gammelford?
Yes. Councilmember Gammel, go ahead.
Over the last 11 years, my name has been combined with all.
I've just combined the names.
Yeah. The do we have? I'm sure, you know, as we're looking at this as a potential, like, we're saying, hey, to support a statistically valid survey, this company is saying, on average, they can get you X percent more response. They can show us that based off of their track record?
Yes, so there are a number of firms in the Puget Sound area that this is all they do. Elway is an example of that type of firm. They're professionals.
It can be professionally annoying, too.
Maybe that's what we're paying them for.
Well, yeah.
Persistence.
Yes, let's call it persistence.
Yes, just a second, Mr. Palmer. Any other questions from councilmembers? All right, James, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say that even though we do send it out just email, I do follow up with specific businesses. If they're high-profile businesses in town, like, say, Canyon Creek or one of the larger companies, I will actually try to reach out to them and do make phone calls. And we tried, Sally can attest to this, but it takes a lot to call these businesses. I spent maybe a month and over several hundred phone calls. And that's not even, you know, a tenth hardly. So and just finding the right people can be hard. So it's a it's a difficult task to get them to respond, even if you're trying to reach into the business. And if these people have years of experience doing that and know how to do it and can get it for us, I think initial kind of participation could maybe then snowball into, okay, you've taken it now. Next time we do it, you're already on. And we could then do it ourselves next time and have a higher participation. That would be my hope. So just kind of getting people into the process would be the biggest challenge. And once we get them into the process, it might not be necessary to do another statistically valid survey and hire the company. And if we do go to a biennial model to match the budget process, I think that makes it seem like it's more concentrated and focused and they'd be more likely to do it perhaps. Because I think tapping the same people every year, they're like, nah, you know, whatever. So I think if we went one time, we could maybe get that increase on our own the second time if we went to that biennial. So that's just my feedback on that.
All right, thank you. I'd like to hear from the EDAB board members also on on the question posed to us. I think one of the things that's important is that it's valuable for staff. It's valuable for me. It's valuable for the council members to see the responses. But you're also tailoring recommendations on policy and budget and projects to the council and to me and to staff. So what are your thoughts on the question being posed to the council? Board Member King, Board Member Woods, and then online?
Yeah, I think this, I think it's well worth the serious consideration to put some put some money behind this and get some expert help. It is very, very discouraging. I mean, 75 responses out of 1,200 is is difficult. And of course, going biennially will ease some of the pain, for instance, of the $25,000 to $35,000. It's not something that has to be spent every year. My personal feeling is that certainly the homeless the homeless situation was vastly improved by comments that were, you know, and feedback from the survey. But, you know, things like transportation and all, there are some things I think business owners may be seeing these same questions on the survey every year and nothing's been done. Or that's their perception, right? And so there needs to be some kind of feedback move. And of course, we have lots of communication vehicles, right? But somehow we need to get the information out that, yeah, we are doing things about these things that are important to you. You may not see it. And I don't know what that answer is. But I was, as a as a member of the staff at Harson, I was the one that answered the survey. So I guess I speak from that position, too. So I'm I'm really hoping the council will approve the funds to get a professional, to get some assistance, maybe helping us read out the questions a bit and that kind of thing.
Thank you. Board Member Woods?
I agree. I think it will help with questions because I, on my professional level, I work with businesses. And if I've heard from them that I've had business owners leave Monroe because of that 22 issue and having them, making sure that they fill that out and we get that information. So I think it's important to have a vehicle to make sure that we are listening to our business community. And I think because even though all the efforts that we've put into it, we're not getting the response that we need. But I think it's very valuable information that we can receive for it. So that's why I think it's important to have another somebody else, the professional, to come in with the new questions and be able to reach more people.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nugent? I'm sorry, Board Member Nugent?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I agree with the other members. I I agree with what Sally said, you know, getting the feedback from business owners on their various pain points. And as individual members, we give our feedback and we analyze the questions on the survey every year. And I was actually just making notes on some ideas for possible questions on this year's survey to help because we're always tweaking. And even though I I think the cost would be a huge benefit, it's a lot of money, yes, but it it's nice for the business owners. I mean, I'm a local business owner. It's nice to feel heard. And as with the homeless act, you know, seeing the changes and seeing the impact. So have that feedback and be able to provide a an end product to council with result with the business survey with a product that you guys can use and have a working product that can help guide you guys with some feedback from business owners in town. So I think it's a valuable product personally.
Thank you. Board Member Woods? We can't hear you? We still can't hear you? Okay. Thumbs up, Andy's good with that. All right. I see you. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions or comments from councilmembers? Go ahead, Councilmember Gammel.
We talked earlier, you guys, this is what they do. What is their typical response rate that they're getting?
I, that's a great question. It's supposed to be statistically valid, so it's not the entire, you know, body. But I think what I would.
Totally get it. But, you know, like, I mean, we're at, when I, back in the math, in high school math here, 6.25% response rate, right? 75 out of 1,200 businesses. Old days of direct mail marketing, anything that was in the 5% to 7% was like awesome. So I just wanted, I mean, I'm all for data. You guys know that. I mean, like, big time. But I would love to see, okay, what is the expectation? Because if it responded, we're thinking we're going to give a 20% or 30%. So it's a 10x to what we're doing internally. What's our cost internally to get a 6.25% response rate? And then what is our expectation? If the delta is such that, like, it's a no-brainer? Then why are we having a conversation that? For me, that's where it, you know, it gets.
Yeah, I'd have to I'd have to do more research. I'd have to call and give them a draft scope of work and see what they came back with. But my help would be, for example, is we're overrepresented right now in the survey on the service sector and restaurants. And we really need to hear from the manufacturers and the other business types that we're not hearing from now. So it would be an increase in survey response from those groups. And, you know, great if we get more of the service and more of the restaurant. That's mine, too.
Right. I just, you know, my whole focus on a strategy, what is the should we expect based off of what they have done in the past? And then based off of inserting that, you know, number from the council decision perspective, does then does it make, you know, does it make sense to invest? Because we're just having conversations about, hey, we're potentially going into a recession. We're going to have to make tough decisions. We have something right now that's producing 62.5% return response rate, which we all say, hey, we want more. Disagreement in any way, shape, or form, right? But if we're going to spend $35,000 to get an 8% response rate, I'm out. So that's the type of data that I would like to like to see. And if they're saying, hey, 15, 20, you know, we're going to double our response rate. And to your point, you know, it's you're going to get it in the sectors that you're looking for. Great. And they can show us that they've done that in the past? I'm all in.
Yeah, I think what I hear is cost and benefit, right? So where's the cost and benefit? And and I think that's valid. And we can certainly come back with more information. But we didn't want to, I think, go down and start pursuing that. If we got from council, no, we're not interested at all. So that's really helpful to hear that feedback and we can come back with more information.
Cool. Okay. I'm going to go to Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Starbuck first, going to go to Rich. He's had some information on the data for the last three years, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just thought it would be helpful for council as you're you're thinking about this item. So in 2019, we had 966 businesses in Monroe. We had 65 responses that year. That's 6.7% response rate. In 2020, we had 1,150 businesses, 72 responses. So the the number of responses went up, but by a less factor than the number of businesses. So it was actually 6.2% response rate in 2020. And then the most recent year, the 2021 survey, we've had 1,299 businesses in Monroe, only 34 responses. So we dropped down to a 2.6% response rate. And and that was when we really started to see that there was a struggle in making that connection.
It's great data, obviously. Denominator and denominator.
Yes.
Right? I'm going to drill in there. Do we have this broken out by? Because we have seen a rise of, like, look, I'm going to be filing the business licenses for personal consulting. Right? That's a lot different than what we're trying to tap into. And so when you're looking at that number, that response rate, based off of the target that we're going after as opposed to what may be, you know, growing, destroying them, like, oh, my God, we've got a huge, huge, you know, problem. That I would be very interested to see that that breakout of that. We've grown the number from 925 to 13 something. But where, what's that? Where's the growth? Is it in home-based businesses? Where's that? Where's that growth? How's it bucketized, I guess, is what I'm saying, the response rate?
And I'll defer to Mr. Palmer if he has any data handy on that.
We did, didn't we?
What I what I pulled here very quickly was the just the response rate that he provided in the the annual report. Mr. Palmer, do you have any additional data on the factors that Councilmember Gammel was asking about?
Is this regarding the percentage of different sectors? Like, how many in manufacturing? How many in restaurants or hospitality? What was the question again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's really what I'm looking for, James, is that there, from the word in my head goes when I'm looking at this, is that we're, and actually Deb said it as well, we're trying to target and getting more responses from a specific sector. We want more manufacturing. We want more from that. What are we getting today? What's the breakout today of the 70 or the 75? And then when we are comparing all-in numbers, we're using, you know, the all-in businesses. That's probably not a good comparison. We should be looking at, what are we trying to target? So it's not all in 13, whatever. It's those business sectors. I want to say we had this or this request was made before in a report that we had. There, you've got to be giving me the finger, the right finger.
So I didn't, I didn't find it in. Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, I get you.
I did find it in in Mr. Palmer's report for 2021. We had three responses from industrial and manufacturing sector. We had four responses from restaurant and dining.
So from that perspective, so three responses, but how many businesses do we have?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Three.
What's three of what?
So we can pull together that additional data. It sounds like you've got some data mining you can do and we'll pull that data together.
Because a three of that is a 15% response rate. And we're targeting, we want more. And that's where we're watching because we want to spend an additional 30. You see where I'm going?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I would just ask that, you know, before we support another survey, when it seems that the surveys are not that effective, that we consider some other ways of reaching out to these business owners. For instance, I think that filling out the survey on email, a lot of people may think, why am I even bothering? You know, we're asking them to take their time to sit down and fill this out. And they may think this is just going to go into a black hole. Nothing will come of it. Why am I bothering? I think there's a general feeling of that out in the business community. And how wonderful would it be if the EDAB or members of the city staff were to personally target this group of people and say, hey, we're going to have an after-hours open house or an after-hours invitation for you to come and share your concerns about the community. How could we help? How can we make you more successful as businesses? Come have some refreshments and sit down and talk to us face to face. We want to look in your eyes. We want to hear you tell us what you're experiencing, what your challenges are, rather than here's an email that's faceless, that's not a personal communication in any way. And of course, we're having some low returns. I think I would like to see other creative ways of reaching out to this business community rather than just another email survey, when we know that it's not really that effective.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Kenny. Go ahead, Deborah, did you have something?
I was just going to add that, as James mentioned earlier, he is following up with individual phone calls and talking to people one-on-one as well. So I didn't want that to be lost in the in the discussion.
James, did you have anything further to add?
Yeah, I was going to say, we did have some open houses earlier. I think probably 2019, earlier, before pandemic. And we held it in the afternoon. And we were doing them regionally by commercial district, right? So we did one in the Main Street and had the Main Street businesses there. Again, getting them to show up is hard. That's a that's a difficult task. But I do like that forum. And I think that there's a way to improve that and to continue to use that forum. In addition, I think it would be a good compliment, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So as part of what we're doing here is we're trying to think about what we would put in our FPA, Request for Proposals, for, or whatever it is that Deborah's going to do in terms of a solicitation for somebody to do the work. So you're bringing up really good points that even if we've done them before, we want to make certain we're trying to expand on that and do better this coming time. So thank you. Councilmember Starbuck, you're up.
Well, I've kind of lost my train of thought. Except that if we're going to commission somebody to spend this money on a survey, we don't just want to hear that they're going to put out a greater number of emails required. We want the survey predicated on personal contact and feedback. So if we spent $35,000 and they say we contacted 35% instead of 2%, talked to them, filled out the survey, and here's the result, then it'd probably be worth the money. But just to say, we contacted all 1,200 and we only got 80 back is not, wouldn't be satisfactory to me as to their as their part of what we're trying to get done. But their part of what we're paying for. We need specifics to say, we need to know you contacted them and we got information back. Then you pursue your plan to get information back.
All right, does that? Yep, makes sense. Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck. Before I go back to Councilmember Gammel, anything with your councilmember Fisher or Davis? All right. Okay. Just to throw in here that I I support the idea of the survey and what we've done in the past. But I absolutely agree with what everybody's saying. This is, I just don't want to offer money. I hope that we get something that that works for us this time. I would like to see something a little more substantial. And I think everybody's made great points about, you know, what would look before our what could be provided in some ideas to do that. So in general, what I'm saying, I do support the survey, but it needs to be, four years later, it needs to be sent out again. I think one of the things, then we'll go to Councilmember Gammel, one of the things that's running through my mind, too, is that we're beginning the comprehensive planning process, you know, for the next 10-year update. And the information we get, especially over the next year on this, will help inform some of the things around forming the comprehensive line update for the for the next 10 years. So I think that not only is it important that we increase those numbers and, you know, improve the data that we're getting for business purposes, but also as part of the comprehensive update. So I just want to acknowledge that as I'm talking about this. This would fit into a larger picture. Councilmember Gammel, go ahead.
My my head goes on this. I, again, I go back to the, what's the universe, the 1,300? Breaking bucketizing that out of the type of business and the sectors that you guys have. And maybe it's, and we still do the for all sectors, we send out a traditional survey. But then maybe you shave that number down by going and targeting just where you're trying to get. We're spending $25,000 to $35,000 for the whole universe. But what I heard and a lot of the explanations were what we really are trying to get is more out of this particular sec, feedback from this particular sector. So what if we just took those 200 businesses or whatever it is, whatever percentage that is? We pare it down to that and you target. Okay, we really want to get a response from these two sectors. But we still send the the traditional survey to everybody. And you could do that, you know, the following year, you could, you know, we can finish line item. You could do it for, okay, now we're going to target a different, you know, a different sector. So you're still, you're keeping everybody, but we get kind of a little strategic on where we want to spend that extra money and not spend 35 grand for for everything, when we can get what we need from from the elements on the annual survey, is the thought.
Right, sounds good. Deborah, anything else?
Nothing on this. Most board members have anything else they wanted to add.
A board member has anything else to add? Please put your hand up. All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and go on to the next item.
So the next item we have on the list is several recommendations that the board would like to make to the council who continue on into the 2023 and 2024 budgets. And I think, Rich, we have some individual members who are going to speak to these recommendations. I didn't bring your GCH. Yes, is what I'm saying.
You bet. Oh, so the first item on your recommendations, which Council Deborah mentioned it a bit ago in her presentation, would be a resolution to extend the Economic Development Board for an additional four years. Certainly would be open to any board member speaking on this item. But Board Member Woods and Board Member Nugent, who are with us online, are our two longest-serving current board members. So I'd like to invite them first to speak on this item. Board Member Woods, go ahead.
I think that it, I think that this board, even since it started, and I think it is valuable to the city because I think economic development, each of us that are on the board have a different reach. And so we're able to reach different businesses and different people in the community. So I think it is really vital for us to continue the board. So I think it is really vital for us to continue the board. Because I think we've accomplished a lot, but I think we still have a lot more to accomplish.
All right, thank you. Board Member Nugent, did you have anything to add?
I would, I'd agree with what Katie had to say. And it's nice to have our community involvement. That's kind of in addition to what the city staff and everybody else provides and what James Palmer provides. So I feel like we give an extra voice to the city from the, the local businesses and the people that we interact with in the community that is in addition to what the city staff is going to have. So I feel like we provide that extra to the city.
All right, thank you. Any other board members interested in speaking on point two A that's on the screen? All right, any council members have any concerns about the resolution to extend the E-DAB for four more years? Go ahead, Counselor Campbell.
No concerns. I just, I couldn't agree more. I mean, this has been great and it has accomplished, you know, I was very excited back with twenty eighteen. Twenty eighteen, when we started it, that, you know, to get that participation. So yeah, no, and I love, I like the conversation we just had. I love having conversations like that, so. And that, because of E-DAB, that's because of this process, so it's great.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I fully agree. I think you guys are incredibly important. As I look down here, the things that you've accomplished, if the only thing was gateway, gateway finding, I think it would become something. But obviously, there's what? Twelve items below that that have been achieved. So I think you guys are vitally important, so I completely agree with, with you, Campbell.
And ironically, Council Member Fisher from my bank, as I stepped out to help the, stepped in, there was another person that walked in to pay a bill and they paid a point to tell me about the signs.
Oh, cool.
Hopefully it was there. It was totally possible. They told me about the signs. Counselor McCarver, did you have something? No, I. You gave you a thumbs up. That's what that was? Okay, let the record show that Counselor McCarver said thumbs up on the idea. Go ahead, Counselor Paul.
I served on the E-DAB for two years, and I have to tell you, it was one of the most, it felt like it was one of the most effective things that I've served on. Of course, you know, I was planning commissioner two, so I'm not going to discount that. But I do feel like, you know, my, my expertise was already in my business and how to incorporate that into how can we help the city as a whole? Because the business is the lifeblood. It keeps the, keeps all the money flowing. It's very interactive with all the people, all that kind of stuff. I just think that having you guys as business members and banking members and all the people who are very, you're in touch with the people every day. And your opinion matters a lot. So I definitely support it of another four years of E-DAB.
Right. Any objection? Okay, go ahead, Counselor McKinnon.
I just wanted to weigh in on that too. I also was an ad hoc member of the original group. And I just love that you included nonprofits and consider them tourism businesses. And I was always very pleased to be included. And the work that you're doing is absolutely subject to the city, so double thumbs up.
Right, so I'm here in support for two A. I will say this also in addition to the sign, in addition to a number of the other projects that are assigned. So number of the other projects that are going on around town. The information you're bringing, the recommendations. You also, your board also, one of the early things that was recommended was to go through an aspirational vision process, which led to Imagine Monroe, which has been becoming a springboard for a lot of other things that we're doing. So I really value the work that the board's doing from a very high level to getting signs in the ground, to doing the surveys. So I'm happy the council's supportive of it as well. And so, thank you. And we'll go ahead and move on, I think, to two B. And I'm still referring to.
Yeah, and, yeah, this one is mine. I actually filled out a lodging tax advisory committee application. So an LTAC application for, for funding for downtown restaurants. It's something, again, that our business community has been asking for, for a while. And it's been on our long-range strategic plan list. And in completing that application, one of the questions is around how long your proposal impacts tourism? What are the members that are coming back from either your events that you're putting on or the proposal that you're making? And I have to tell you, it was nearly impossible to find data around how do events, tourism events in our community actually affect our economy? I mean, anecdotally, you know, when we hold events like Try Monroe and, and other activities, whether they're at the fairgrounds or someplace in the city, there's anecdotal reports that tourism increases, but we actually don't have any data to support that. And so it's something that I realized would be helpful to applicants for LTAC funding. So these are nonprofits and poor popular organizations that are requesting funding to put events on in Monroe to know how, how do these events impact? So it would be bringing in an organization that would actually talk to visitors that are at these events and find out where did they come from, how far did they travel, how long are they staying, how much money are they planning to spend? And then providing that information then to our business community and to applicants so they can put together stronger applications. And we have a better idea when we're trying to fund applications through grant processes, whether or not these events are impacting our community and to what extent that impact is. So again, it's just more data for you data lovers out there, myself included. It's just another way to find out how can we change these programs and continue to make them better.
Was there anybody from the E-DAB that wanted to speak today?
Yeah.
Who?
That's what I think Deborah covered, I think. We, well, we, we talk, we talk a lot about tourism, right? But we don't really know, kind of bottom line, right, of, of, of how well we're doing in that area.
Sounds good. Rich, did you have something to add?
Just something really quick, Mr. Merrick, thank you. One of the, one of the functions that I perform here for the city is the management of the LTAC process. So the applications, the facilitation of the board, and then the reporting each year to the Joint Legislative and Review Committee of how we use those funds. And I did that for the county before coming here to the, to the city as well. And I can tell you that those questions that we asked on the application that Ms. Knight spoke to, the reason we asked that is because the state asks us those questions. And when we put in the numbers, there's a dropdown menu of how did you calculate this? And almost every application I've ever reported on, and that's probably two hundred and fifty between these two positions, the answer is structured estimate. Because, as she said, there just isn't the, the data available to back this up. And so to be able to actually report not only to the state, but to help our LTAC make these decisions on how these, these funds are, are used. But to be able to report something other than a structured estimate, I think would be a very positive view from those that monitor how we use these funds. Thank you, Mr. Merrick.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell, go ahead.
I thought we, in fact, I know we've gotten some tourism data from the county because we also get it from the fair. Was it the sports, we used to have a regular, I'm misremembering this, my phone's positive. A sports commission, it was a sports commission, it was a county, it was the fair.
Yeah, and Rich might be able to speak more to this than I can. But the fair estimates are just that, they're estimates, and they're not based on, on any actual information. What we did have previously was, what was the name of the cell phone company?
Arrivalist.
Arrivalist, thank you. So we did have a contract with Arrivalist with, through the county where we were starting to collect cell phone data. And that was by fencing off various areas of the city and looking to see where people were coming from and where they're going to. We currently also do collect cell phone data now through another company called Datafy. And that does provide some additional information. Again, it's the same thing as Arrivalist, it's just a different company that's collecting it. And I, Rich and I have started to look at those numbers to see whether or not we can get all the information we need. What's missing from that, though, is the information that I talked about earlier, which is where actually did you come from? Because it, it only says that you came from outside and came in. And then counts how long you were in, in through Monroe, so passing through even. I think what's the minimum amount of time you spend in Monroe before it's one of those?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. So it doesn't really tell you, did somebody come for a specific event? And then how long did they stay here and how much money were they planning to spend? So there's some additional dropdown data that is not available in Datafy and cell phones.
Is it not available curiously, or that we're not spending the, the human capital in order to get there? Because obviously, my mind goes straight to, obviously, if they're at the park for X amount of time, there's, there's data point there. You know, the time that it registers, or in Lake Tyre, the time that it registered at the park or the time that it registers until the time they leave. Hey, it's logically to assume they're at the fair or downtown. I just want, are we mining any of that?
Not to that, not to that extent. We have it, but we haven't been mining it, no.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's possible even, I know you have more information about how that system works than I do. But you still, you still don't have a deep knowledge, right?
Yeah. So just as an example, my mother lives in Yakima. If she came here to Monroe and spent at least fifteen minutes here, what it would tell us is that somebody from Yakima came to, and, and to your point, Counselor Campbell, my phone number is still five oh nine, and I got one of sixteen. But it knows that I live in Bothell because that's where I spend most of my, my time. So it's not just area code. But it would know that my mother from Yakima came to Monroe and spent at least fifteen minutes here. And if she went to one of the seven, six or seven or eight locations that we have geofenced, we can look at it and say, okay, she went to Lake Tyre. What it doesn't tell us is, if she were here last weekend, was she participating in the, in the triathlon? Or did she just happen to, you know, visit the park that weekend? That's that missing middle that this, this service could tell us is not only where they went, but also why they were here.
Are we paying for that today? Because that's the piece we are.
Yeah, so where my head, because, look, I love data, I love the, you know, concept of where, I mean to be the bonus, are we taking advantage of data points that are already being, should we be putting money towards harvesting information that we already have or already paying for with a program or, or some sort of consulting service that can?
That's what we're proposing. So I'm not suggesting that they do, that they do much more. I think we do need to have some people on the grounds doing some survey work at some of these events. But to your point, we have some of this data already. We just need somebody to go in there and have a search through it.
So if it's the existing data that we're already paying for, but you're also proposing that we collect additional data?
Yes, exactly right.
Because my, my mind goes to, let's use the data that we're already getting. Because we thought, now that's all coming back to me, yes. We thought that that's what we were going to get when we were, when we turned that switch on for the, for the phones. So it's aggregating that data in a way that's consumable for the board and for economic development to be able to make recommendations.
Yes, exactly. For you all too, to be able to decide whether or not you want to continue to invest in some things that may anecdotally sound like they're good investments for tourism, but may, may not actually be doing the things that they say that they're doing. They still may be great events, you may decide to support them still. But it may not be then because we're bringing people into town that are staying.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council members? Any objection to doing something additional with tourism data and visitor analysis? All right, thank you very much. Next item?
The next item is to finalize and implement a business recruitment of three subcommittees that members are a part of. So I would like to first ask Board Member Woods, if she would like to speak to this one as a member of the Business Recruitment Subcommittee.
Board Member Woods, go ahead.
I was going to refer back to James because I've been out for the last couple of months.
All right.
So I'm not up to date with what we've discussed in the last two months. So I'll see if he could, I can have him speak to it since Jeremy's not here.
Yeah, Jeremy Blake is a person who's been most involved in that strategy.
All right, thank you. James, go ahead.
Sure. So again, B R R E, Business Recruitment, Retention and Expansion. If we talk about retention and expansion, that's what we've been talking about. The survey, the annual report, things that inform our businesses, help identify their issues, try to resolve any issues, try to find space for them, which continues to be a challenge for us. The recruitment end is one that tends to get most of the publicity. And for us, that's been a rather difficult, you know, process because of our space limitations. We have no industrial space to really go out and advertise large-scale availability. It's pretty tight. And what we have growing wants to move in usually to whatever is available that comes up. And it's kind of a musical chairs for our local companies as they try to find space and stay in our community. So our recruitment strategy, as laid out in the annual report, will begin to focus across multiple sectors rather than saying we're going to recruit industrial manufacturers or we're going to recruit beverage, you know, craft beverage makers. What we'd like to do is look at businesses that rely on a market segment that we know we have in our community. So in our recent report that we had for the regional demand analysis, we had a pretty good understanding of who's coming through the town, you know, the traffic impacts and things as far as like from outside of the community. And how can we communicate that market availability to businesses that, that are looking to that market? And that could be retail, that could be service and hospitality. That could be, you know, some, not so much manufacturing, but it could be, for instance, of outdoor equipment manufacturing and things like that. So we got to blend that, though, with our availability. And so keeping an inventory and kind of looking at where we can place people. Because if we go out and put out the word Monroe is open for business, but we don't have any place to put you, that can be difficult. And that can be, you know, in the end, negative for us. So it's matching our inventory, helping, you know, kind of our local landlords and our local property owners to understand what the market forces or what market is in demand here and helping them kind of get their buildings to the capacity where they can take on those high-paying clients that are looking for space in Monroe. So again, we're going to be focusing on that market segment, outdoor adventure, riffing on our work with the county on tourism and looking at what opportunities we can, selling access to the market segment. And then continue on the retention and expansion aspects by continuing to poll our businesses, find out where their pinch points are and helping them stay in Monroe by helping them find spaces when they are at that spot where they need to move into a larger space. That's probably our biggest critical kind of focus right now is we don't want to lose businesses. So how do we keep the businesses that are growing in town? And that's the challenge right now.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Is there any objection to the proposal to finalize and implement the R R E strategy in the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four biennium? Anything to add from the E-DAB board members? All right, thank you very much. Next item? Two point D, Continue Sky and Snowmish Adventure Guide. And also the Choose Monroe publication as well, so. Want to work those two together? Yeah. So brief, brief, I was. I got this one thing. I think, I've been noticing the two-face action you guys are doing there. So quick, quick introduction for council. You're probably all familiar with the Choose Monroe magazine, which previously had been kind of serving a dual role as both a tourism publication and a here's what's happening in Monroe publication as well. So this priority was a, a real passion for Ms. Tuttle when she was on the board with us. And we, we started to implement that this year working with the City of Snohomish and the Chambers of Commerce from Lake Stevens and the Sky Valley to implement the Sky and Snow Adventure Act, which has really become a regional tourism publication for everything that's going on in the Sky Comish Snohomish River Valley from Lake Stevens up through Sky Comish and onto the, onto the pass. And at the recommendation of the E-DAB, Choose Monroe has become a very locally focused publication. As we put on the screen, everything and all Monroe. And our first edition of that publication under that format came out this summer. So wanted to give that, that quick introduction. I'd be happy to have Board Members King or Nugent, who are on our Tourism Subcommittee, add anything to that that they would like. All right, thank you, Counselor, I'm sorry. Board Member Woods, your Board Member Nugent, do you have anything further to add on that item?
Yeah.
Board Member King, sorry.
That's right. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm really pleased to see us have a locally focused publication because, as we all know, we have lots and lots of people coming into town from relatively close by areas. Right, right, I just have one little anecdote that's so cogent here. I look at the front desk of the line now, which is fabulous. And a woman walked in today, and she said, I just moved here from Mill Creek. I had no idea what a nice town this is. And, and that really is what we're trying to say in the Choose Monroe magazine. Because it's, there are so many people, and we talk about this all the time on the EDAB, who don't know the fabulous parts that we have, who don't have any idea. They came here because the housing is attractive, but there's so much about this community. So I'm, I'm, you know, the sky and snow adventure, there's a lot there. But I just really want to underline my support for the Choose Monroe publication as well.
All right. Any other board members with comments? All right, councilmembers, do you have any concerns about continuing the, those two periodicals? I don't see any objection. All right, thank you. Next one, two E.
So we talked about two E in the initial discussion. That one is around the statistically valid business surveys. So unless there's objection, Mr. Mayor, I think we can move on to two F.
All right, any further questions on two E?
No.
All right, thank you, two F, go ahead.
So as Mayor mentioned earlier, we are in the process of interviewing firms to help the city do an update to the city's brand. And in discussions with Ms. Knight and the team, that's kind of led to a potential need to take a look and do a brand review of Choose Monroe, which is our tourism, is our tourism brand, especially as our local magazine is, has retained that name. So I would like to invite Ms. Knight to add to this one. This was, this was a brand title of hers that's been, that's been building some momentum. So Deborah?
Not much more to add on that other than, as Rich mentioned, we are currently reviewing and interviewing consultants to update the city's brand and logo. And in reviewing those proposals, it struck me that a number of those firms also did tourism-focused on brand reviews. And I thought it probably would be worthwhile to have a conversation with the chamber and the city to talk about whether or not Choose Monroe is still working well for us, you know, is it something we want to continue? Do we want to take the adventure starts here and move that over to the chamber as a tourism? Or do we want to start over? So just trying to, again, reach out to the tourism and business community and find out whether or not the Choose Monroe brand is still working well.
Any concerns about us checking to see if that's an interest in reevaluating the local economic development community? All right, I don't see any objection. Thank you very much. Anything further then on two F? All right, let's move on to three A.
So this one is near and dear to a lot of, a lot of hearts and minds in this room. That is to advocate for continued funding for Finish Five Two Two and US Two Capacity Improvements. This one is very, very much a passion for Board Member Wims, and I know he was having a connectivity issue earlier. So Ms. Knight is offered to speak on this one if Board Member Wims is not able to connect with us.
Yep, and this was a continued conversation, and actually it came out of the surveys that we have done where a lot of our business community is really struggling, particularly pre-pandemic, with capacity issues along five two two. And being able to have those verbatim statements has been really helpful in the campaign with our legislators that aren't as familiar with five two two as we are. The other one that's really come to the forefront, and as Rich mentioned, is a real passion for Board Member Wims, is US Two Capacity Improvements. I think there's a clear focus from the City Council and Mayor Thomas around five two two is our primary focus. But that we don't want to forget that US Two is also a challenge now for many people, even that are living in the Sky Valley to come into the road to do their shopping on the weekends. And so there's a lot of economic impacts, I think, to having those capacity improvements. And we just need to continue to stay focused on them and work with our partners along US Two Board, and support them in their efforts to bring some funding for capacity improvements.
All right, any concerns about that from a focus? All right, redevelopment of the First Airfield property?
Oh, so this one, and three C, the North Kelsey Development, I'd like to throw to Mr. Palmer, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, James, go ahead.
Well, so the First Airfield property is still not sold. At about a month and a half, like a little more than a month ago, we met with a group, the Akless family, who own the Everett Skate Deck. And they had a vision that they described to us, the mayor included, and we were very pleased to hear it. They put an offer in shortly after that meeting and waited, and waited. I contacted them, they had not heard from the broker. Four weeks went by, they did not hear from the broker. They finally heard from him about a week ago, they said, and I just recently checked in. And they said, well, they were changing the deal. They were taking one of the parcels out, and we're not going to sell that after all. And if they wanted to resubmit an offer for the remaining two parcels, would they be interested? And they said no. So at this point, I'm a little curious what's going on with the sellers. And are they not sure if they're selling all of the parcels? Are they going to keep some of the parcels? This continues to be an issue for us, is to kind of understand what their goals are. I mean, it's been difficult to get them to meet with people. They're focusing everybody on the broker. The broker doesn't seem to understand what the sellers want because he was just as confused when they took the third parcel out in the middle of the offer. So I'm going to reach out to the broker and speak with him to find out kind of what happened on that deal. Because to be honest, the Akless family has felt it was quite unprofessional, and we're not very happy with that process. So I felt really bad about that. I don't want people coming in to do business in our town, leaving with that kind of a taste in their mouth. So I'm going to be reaching out to the broker to find out what happened on that. They, their marketing is not targeting what we would like to see. Entertainment, you know, hotel, something like that. They're, they've brought many options to us, including a lay down yard for a, you know, kind of equipment auction, you know, like, and other things that were non-conforming uses. So they're not marketing to the right group. And so we're trying to figure out how we can help the Havich family and the sellers, and, and to continue to let other people who have entertainment development goals to know about the property. But yeah, I was very disappointed in that last go around. But we'll see if there's any way to revive that. To me, that would have been the ideal development in that spot. And I was very disappointed to hear how that went, and so.
Okay, so three C?
I'm sorry?
Three C, North Kelsey?
North Kelsey. So we continue to be hung up on one issue, and that is the type of rental housing. Initially, they had asked us to restrict the housing and to preclude Section Eight, which is a federal housing assistance program. That's illegal. And so they were like, oh, no, we don't want you to do anything illegal. We'll come back with some new language. They came back with pretty much the same language, and additionally did not include things that we had already discussed. So there was a question whether they had even sent the right document. When I went back to confirm that they had sent the right document, the attorney's on vacation, and they can't confirm, and she doesn't know. And so he's back tomorrow. And so if that is indeed the right document, we seem to be at an impasse. And we are maybe looking at other options. Eminent domains continues to remain an option.
James?
Yes.
James, so I understand that we're still working on North Kelsey? And is there anything else for, for the meeting that's high level on this?
No, that was it. We're waiting for tomorrow, I'll have an answer on where are the next steps for Lowe's negotiations, and that's where we are.
All right, thank you. Three D, Monroe Downtown slash Main Street Development?
And I can take that one.
Go ahead.
So this has been a request that has come from a business owner in the downtown who is looking to make some zoning code changes. And so those zoning code changes came forward to the Economic Development Advisory Board for input, and they will be moving back into the planning commission for further discussion. So really, the issue here is just how closely we're starting to work between the boards and commissions. So items that affect economic development that have typically gone straight to the planning commission, we're now bringing those through the Economic Development Advisory Board to get a business owner perspective on them.
Any questions for Deborah on that one? Go ahead, Councilmember King.
I just wanted to share one piece of information that might be really interesting for this group that I just found out about this week. And James, I plan to give you a call, but I might as well just tell you about it now because it makes more sense that everyone can hear. There is a parcel of land at Fremont and Ferry that is currently owned by business owner Eric Kavanaugh. He was originally planning to move the two buck houses there. I think you're aware of this, it went through all the city permitting. And he even has an artist friend ring, he was going to move the houses there and create a retail space, and then try and secure a business for that space. He is no longer interested in developing that. He is currently planning to sell that lot.
Councilmember King, Councilmember King, can we take this one offline?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Downtown Main Street Development, mixed use, and infrastructure improvements? All right, thank you. Next one is complete sidewalks in Fradlin's Industrial Area and the 154th Street Southeast, Blueberry Lane Southeast area.
So I'm going to ask Board Member Nugent to speak on this one. Board Member Nugent, I did not have a chance to tell you, I don't know if you heard earlier, the Fradlin's area was one that was brought up by Board Member Blake. He was not able to be with us this evening, and Board Member Nugent offered earlier today to speak to that one as well. So Board Member, if you don't mind, I'll have you speak to both of those if you would like. And Board Member Nugent?
Absolutely. Yeah, there have been some concerns with some inconsistency in the sidewalks and in the industrial district. Since Jeremy's located in the industrial district, he deals with a lot of the complaints from the surrounding businesses due to the inconsistent sidewalks and the safety issues it creates in that area with the inconsistent sidewalks in that area. And people parking, and then people having to walk into the streets because people are parking where there is no sidewalks. So people are walking in the street and parking wherever. So it creates kind of a safety issue down in the industrial district. And then kind of the same issue we're getting between King Street and 179th along where Blueberry Lane becomes 154th. We kind of have that same issue going on there. Where, because as we have these new housing subdivisions that come in, they put in their random one section of sidewalk. We get these one little spots of sidewalk, and then most of that section doesn't have sidewalks. So we've got middle schoolers and younger kids walking either in the street or in the street next to the, or next to the street in the dirt, but cars are parking there where people would be walking, but it's kind of making that area very unsafe during the school year, and especially now that it's summer. So it's raising some big safety concerns in both those areas. So that's why that topic is coming up.
All right, thank you. Any questions from councilmembers? Anything else to add from EDAB?
Question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Starber.
Could we, could we ask the city to put together a quick map and put red lines on where these areas already dropped around?
Yes.
I can, I can see 154th and 179th. I can see along Fradlin's border. Not sure, I understand in the Fradlin's and industrial area where we're looking for sidewalks, we could leave for that. That would help me.
We'll have staff put together a map and identify this. And any other questions or comments from councilmembers or EDAB? All right, thank you very much. Deborah, what else do you have?
That's it.
All right. Councilmembers, or actually EDAB, let's turn to the board members first. Do you have anything further to add this evening?
I don't know.
All right. Online, Board Member Nugent, do you have anything else to add? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you for coming in. Totally appreciate this conversation, it's great. And I figure this is probably appropriate time since Member Tull is no longer with you guys right now as a member, and just to do a shout out to her, thank you for her involvement with EDAB, Council Planning Commission, also HPA with her, just to add, I'm sure I'm going to miss some of the things that she was involved in, but just a little shout out to really appreciate her activities and devotion to our city.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers? Board members, I think it's safe to say the comments that you heard earlier when I looked through the first slide are, are really backed up by the next slide they came up with. Demonstrating all the work that you have done as a board, you handle a lot of very substantive topics, and you're doing a lot for our community that is really, really valuable. The council members have expressed their appreciation for the work you're doing. I am also expressing my appreciation for all the work you're doing. And you are making a very positive impact upon our community because of the work you're doing. So you're not just producing reports that are sitting on a shelf, you're getting things done. And from our heart to yours, thank you. All right, I guess we go on to the next item on the agenda this evening. I'm not even going to joke, there's an executive session because there is none tonight. Unless there's objection, we are adjourned. All right, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody, and thank you.